Okay, I'd like to welcome all to this evening's regular meeting of the Lakeview Public Schools Board of Education today, Tuesday, July 8, 2025, 7:30 PM at the boardroom at the Wheat Educational Campus. Moving on with the agenda, I'd like to call the attention of the board to the minutes of the budget hearing of June 17, 2025.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Mr. Asia, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I do have one piece of news, it appears Ms. Stanton will be out this evening for personal reasons, so there'll be six of us. Moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17, 2025.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Taylor, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, have we any public communication this evening?
I do not.
All right. Thank you, Board of Education Administration comments. Mr. Zabrowski is not with us this evening, but one point, we have a former graduate here of Lakeview High School who was in the baseball program, his name is Hunter Brown, and he pitches for the Houston Astros in the American League, and I think it's worthy to note that he was selected for the All-Star Game for next Tuesday, July 15, representing the American League. And, you know, he had a slow start, but he's been ramping up each year, and as it stands today, he's got the best ERA in all of Major League Baseball at 1.82, so I think it's worthy to note that one of our former graduates is in the public eye in the sports world, and congratulations to him, and hope for him to have all the best, notwithstanding our Tigers and the fun we've been having with them this past season, so. Any other comments? No?
Mr. Paulson.
Sure, we are underway with lots of things, the summer cleaning, summer school programming, K through 12, that is. We have a state budget that still isn't solved, and we have very different opinions from all three parts of the budget apparatus in Lansing, House with one version, Senate with a whole different version, and the governor with a different version even yet. So it may be a while before we get to a conclusion about that issue, which directly affects local public schools. And in the background, we have the federal government doing a lot of unusual things that do affect local K-12 schools as well. I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments?
Yes, we have summer school that is in the throes of successfully getting kids to credit recovery at the secondary level, and we have a summer school program at elementary that's running this year at Harmon, so we have a number of students who are getting additional supports this summer, so that's been great. Tech Department successfully deployed new Chromebooks to all of those summer school students and teachers working in the program, so they were our first wave that we met that deadline and got those out, and now we're busily working on the deployment, getting ready for the deployment of the rest of the devices to students and to the rest of our staff. So it's been going well, and we have some really great bond projects that are happening this summer, this week started, Advanced is working on the audiovisual and presentation equipment in all of our buildings, so we started with the high school this week, but I'm really excited about the additions that will happen at the elementary levels, too, that really expands our ability to have presentations and functions in those buildings in a much more efficient and better way than a portable mic. So, good things happening.
Awesome, that's good stuff, thank you. Any other comments from the board? All right. Thank you, moving on with the agenda, the appointment of county board legislative committee representative.
Macomb Intermediate School District requested Lakeview Board to appoint a representative and an alternate for the 2025-26 County Board Legislative Committee. County Board Legislative Committee meets most the second Tuesday of each month, 24-25, Macomb County Board reps, where Jevivee Taylor and Robin Martin was the alternate. At this time, Mr. President, you can seek a representative and an alternate from anyone who is interested.
I'm willing to be an alternate.
Okay.
I can do it, it's fine.
See?
I know everybody there.
No, Robin, Robin Estes.
Where's Robin?
Oh.
No. I said, I wanted to.
No.
Oh, Robin Stanton?
Yeah.
Oh, the other Robin.
Yes.
Pete, now you know that's not kind, the kind of people that can't speak for themselves.
Oh, wait a second, I was watching a meeting that I missed, and I was nominated for something, so hey.
But it didn't come out of my mouth.
It's everybody's fair game.
It's funny how that works out. All right, so we'll have Ms. Taylor again as the primary, and Ms. Martin will be the alternate, thank you. All right, moving on to item G, depository and investments of school funds.
Lakeview has diverse and broad needs with respect to banking, and administration recommends the depository of district funds for the general fund, food service fund, student school activity fund, capital projects fund, bond funds, debt retirement funds, and the internal service fund be approved at the following institutions: Flagstar Bank, First State Bank, Huntington Bank, Public Financial Management Milaf, PNC Bank, Comerica Bank. Administration also seeks to diversify and take advantage of interest earning and recommends investments in certificates of deposit, commercial paper, SEDARs, and other allowable investments according to the school code to be made in the following institutions: Comerica Bank, PNC Bank, Huntington Bank, Public Financial Management Milaf, Fifth Third Bank, Flagstar Bank, Meter Investments Huntington Bank Custodial, and Independent Bank.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the depository of district funds for the general fund, food service fund, student school activity fund, capital projects fund, bond fund, debt retirement fund, and the internal service fund in the above stated financial institutions. Further, the Board of Education approve the investment in certificates of deposit, commercial paper, and other allowable investments according to the school code in the above stated financial institutions as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, moving on to consent agenda, item A, advertisements.
Periodically, district business requires administration to utilize various media to inform the public. Advertisements shall be printed in but not limited to the Macomb Daily and/or local St. Clair Shores newspaper, the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs website, and Lakeview Public Schools website at the designation of administration for the following: the notice of budget hearing, invitation for bids, call for redemption of bonds, sale of bonds, other needs on a periodic basis.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board of Education approve advertisements to be printed in the above stated publications as needed.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, support by Ms. Taylor, discussion on the, I'm sorry, as this is a consent agenda item, there is no discussion on the motion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, item B, 2025-2026, legal counsel.
With its diverse legal needs, Lakeview Public Schools uses the services of several legal firms. For 25-26, it is recommended that the administration be authorized to continue purchasing legal services on a time and materials basis from the law firms listed with demonstrated expertise in the area of consultation.
Mr. Pres-
I won't read them all, because there's-
I did think you were, sorry. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to purchase legal services as appropriate from the list of approved firms on a time and materials basis during the 2025-2026 school year.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin. Again, as this is a consent agenda item, there is no discussion on the motion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, item C, document signatory designees, 2025-2026.
Various administrative staff members are required to submit reports, file documents, and/or conduct business on the district's behalf. Administration recommends the Board approve the following listed document designees: employees' and master agreements, employee contracts, the scholarship fund and payroll, 125 plan checks, applications and grants, establishing a line of credit, routine reports and memberships, titles and deeds, routine reports, wire transfers, purchase service vendor contracts as presented.
Mr. President, oh, go ahead. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the signatory designees as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, support by Ms. Martin, discussion, again, this is a consent agenda item, there is no discussion on the motion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, moving on to general policy and administrative regulations, FAFSA.
In recent state budget years, an opportunity to apply for a grant to incentivize districts to help students and families understand and complete the free application for federal student aid was offered, also known as FAFSA. Lakeview's administration applied for and was awarded this grant in 2024-25. The use of the funds is restricted to certain activities related to FAFSA and assisting students in career and college exploration. One additional requirement of the grant is for the district to develop policy and or administrative regulations related to making the FAFSA completion process a graduation requirement during the junior or senior year of high school. Administration worked with legal counsel, policy consulting services to develop the required documentation. Tonight, administration brings forward for board consideration the attached policy language update to policy section 2002, learning and achievement graduation requirements. These minor policy language updates are offered with the associated administrative regulation outlining details of the implementation specific to the FAFSA language. Administrative regulations do not need board approval, but we provide this additional detailed information related to the policy language update for reference. Administration recommends the Board consider the policy language update as presented. As our first reading of this policy language change, administration would seek to have formal approval of policy 2002 graduation requirements at the second reading in August. I will offer also, the ad hoc policy subcommittee members talked about this earlier this evening in more detail, and now we open up the topic for more conversation.
Ms. Martin?
What kind of staff resources are required to facilitate making sure this happens? Because I know at our personnel subcommittee meeting, we talked about-
So the grant is in the $280,000 range. We have, according to the latest MDE rules, we have up to four years to spend that, and our intention is to have what amounts to a more than small part-time, probably more like a half-time employee added to support our middle school and high school counseling offices, specifically under this grant for that extra additional sort of effort.
Do you have the opportunity to say, as a superintendent and a principal, to say, hey, this person didn't complete it, it's okay, they can go home and graduate?
So, yes, the nature of the administrative regulations that are associated with this policy language include the opt-out for families to be able to choose not to do it.
Okay.
But under, filling out a waiver essentially of some kind.
You know, being a person that's filed out many, many FAFSA's, it's an owner's task, and if you don't file your taxes, it's tough, and I just don't want a student to be penalized, but I think it's a great thing to encourage lazy parents to do it.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Good point. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item A, under Personnel Changes in Personnel.
Tonight, administration is bringing forward the following changes in personnel since the last presentation to the Board of Education on June 17th: new hire reassignment, Martha Savali, Lakeview High School Secretary to the Executive Director of Athletics and Operations, and the Lakeview High School Assistant Principal; special education part-time, temporary extended school year social worker, Marilyn Shock; summer school lunch aid, lunchroom monitor, Sean Fogodo and Judy Rempel; resignations, Kelly Feimster, Lakeview Public Schools District Psychologist, and Katie Flaherty Siski, Greenwood Elementary School Teacher.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the changes in personnel as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Taylor, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The one that's going to move over to Sean's administrator, something Laurie's, not Laura, what was her name?
Laura Rigoni retired.
Oh, she is, okay.
Yep, she retired.
Ah-huh.
Lucky lady.
Yes. All right, moving on to curriculum, item A, District Handbook for Students and Parents' Guardians for the 2025-2026 School Year.
Presented to the Board of Education this evening are the annual revisions to the District Handbook for Students and Parents' Guardians for the 2025-26 School Year. The revisions are submitted by the administration's recommendations.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the revisions as submitted for the 2025-2026 District Handbook for Students and Parents and Guardians.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion. Yeah, once again, you know, interesting read, this document has sure come a long way over the last 15-plus years, you know, it's good stuff, very comprehensive, and something to go back to when the kids need something to refer to for reliable information at their fingertips, notwithstanding disciplinary things as well. We see too many of those, and hopefully the parents take it as serious as we do.
Will this be reviewed for clerical errors, or is this it?
No, it'll have another read, but if you see something, please email that to me to make sure that we don't.
I will, I will. There was five pages that had issues, so.
Okay, yep, just go ahead and email that to me, and I'll make sure those are changed.
It's not Oxford commas.
Oh, I was just going to say that.
I will just offer that the FAFSA language reference we talked about, we have that in the graduation section on this, in this handbook, and it indicates that, you know, there's a star with it to say, and there is a, you know, they should see their counselor for more information.
Cool. All right, anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Lakeview High School Volleyball Team Camp.
The Lakeview High School volleyball players would like to attend a volleyball team camp at Northwood University. This three-day camp provides top-tier coaching from the university NCAA staff. It offers team strategies to develop and improve basic and advanced volleyball player skills on their state-of-the-art courts in Repima Arena. Northwood University volleyball players and coaches will focus on advanced drills, refining techniques, and boosting teamwork by enhancing both the mental and physical skills needed to be a successful volleyball player. This volleyball team camp runs from July 22nd through July 24th, '25, and all students will be transported by a parent. The cost per student for the three-day camp is $215 and includes lodging, all meals, individual instruction, one-on-one coaching, and exposure to college campus life. Lakeview High School volleyball coach Kevin Nugent, along with assistant coach Matthew Booth, will accompany approximately 19 students.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve Lakeview High School volleyball players to attend the Northwood University Volleyball Team Camp, July 22 to 24, '25.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, support by Mr. Bear, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, seeing no more business before this board, I motion to adjourn.
To the board.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, to adjourn, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned at 7:50. It's close. It's close.
Yeah, you too.
Well, that was a blur.